We need to order both when we need to. I'm not in the place. Probably probably two minutes.
Yes, thank you. I pledge allegiance to your flag, of the United States of America, and to the real love that for which this stands. For my nation, where it's dark and invisible, but where there is justice for all.
What was then.
Yeah, I think.
And then we're just going to.
You have an agenda for you. Move to approve. Second. If you've been in second stage, you'll create the agenda and presented. Is there any? On side discussions. All in favor, please sign if I write saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose name. Question two. Recognition.
I would like to start, and I believe that there will be several other people here who want to say something about this event as well. But the trade fair yesterday was really just historic. Um, my understanding Maggie Antersher and Zach Beam uh worked on that a whole lot. Um, I know there are a lot of other people on the show to be with. You know, that I did was just an amazing opportunity for young people. Couple of board members were at the fair. Um, it's more like businesses, federal state month, agency, selling chain branches in one situation. Uh, so my intended settle down an hour and I was there for over two. Um, and that's the only, the only good I do get to thank them for being there was because they were like kissing stuff. So it was great.
I can piggyback if you want. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'll just add um to that recognition list. Um, the whole committee and it's kind of a long list, so I think it's worth it because that event was massive and for the first time doing it. It went really well and you know, when you jump into that, you're kind of jumping in blind and don't know, don't know yet. And they had thought of so many things um at a time that there weren't a lot of highlights. So I'm really proud of everybody. Um, the individuals on the trade career and trade fair committee are Zach Bean, Maggie Antersher, as you mentioned. And then also Travis Thomas, Hope McKay, Ashley Reed, Bessie Hallgrove, Alicia Engel, Pearson Davidson. And then Ava Williams was a student representative that we had. And then Cindy Pearson, David Chick, and Dana Gordon. Um, additionally, I'd like to thank uh Fennec Bank, Deckard Market, the Pete's Barn, and Kiss Bellas for donating the food for the main and side dishes to feed all of the students and vendors. Um, and then there's just countless others that made the day amazing. And I'm just really proud of what everybody did to to put that event on. So big kudos and recognition to them. Um, I'd add to my recognitions, um, just Alicia Engel and Carrie Manders. Um, we all struggle for officials in basketball. It's always an adventure, um, but they've done a good job getting some new blood in there. And so I just wanted to recognize those who repped for the first time this year because I think it's important that their efforts are important and should be recognized. Um, that's Travis Thomas, Wade Gordon, Trenton Engel, Nathan Streeter, and David Chick. They all joined us as officials this year and um all of them are improving each time they go out. They're asking great questions. Um, and you know, I don't have to do it quite as often. So I'm thankful for that as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Brad. So Dana, just want to say anything about.
I'd just like to add a thank you to the students, not just Western County one, but Western County seven. Uh, the students asked great questions, so I think the students need to be recognized and that they are responding.
I will add too that I I did have a couple of students make a point to tell me how much they enjoyed it and how well that it was like too. So that's.
I was gonna save some career trade fair stuff for the report, but just since we're on it, I guess. Um, you know, the committee is already meeting again tomorrow for a little act action review. Um, they've sent surveys to the vendors, to the students, um, to the staff already. So they're collecting feedback already. So if you were there and have ideas to share for improvement for next year, what was good, what wasn't as smooth. Um, we're willing to take all that feedback to to keep getting better. And so even with all the hard work that all those people did, they're ready to to learn and grow and get better. So that's all I thought about it. So thank you.
I would like to thank everybody that was there, the vendors and the students. And I thought that our teachers all did an amazing job preparing the students for what was to come and to keep track of all that. It was pretty cool. It was great, even as a vendor. Thank you.
Any other recognition? Brad.
Thanks, Madam Chair. In front of you, um, appearing with uh, yeah, a little hand up. For those of you on Zoom land, you do not. So first of all, for the middle school, I would want to recognize the drama club uh led by Miller and Pamela Allen uh with the double races middle school. Their photo is there below. And they've gone a amazing performance of Alice in Wonderland on February eighth. And also uh Mrs. Marty and Vermont Count team who attended the competition in Gillette. Uh, the students that are listed are Peyton Oldman, Ethan Parsons, and
Aaron.
Aaron. Then and they placed seventh overall uh as sixth graders. And the other kickback that I have for you is the trade fair was so good that the people at Maverick were all panicked because we forgot to tell them that the high school students would not be attendance. So when they didn't show up, they were assuming that we were in a lockdown or some kind of crisis. They thought it was a little eerie. So the only feedback that I have is we must let those that attend um and stay, which is a great thing, I guess. But when they don't show up to lunch, it does concern a lot.
Thank you. Any other recognition? Brad.
I would just like to recognize the good citizens from January, Treat the Land, Addison Bledue, and Maisy Owens. And then also I'd like to recognize Sam Carr, Gigi Fullerton, and Donnie Williams for all their extra work with our Valentine fundraiser. If you've been down to the elementary school on Valentine's Day, it's hundreds and hundreds of points. And they spend a lot of time filling them up and doing that. So and then also recognize the refinery. They donate all the helium for those hundreds and hundreds of points. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other recognition? Now we will move on to prisoners' comment. Come to the right side. And introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing me. So uh.
The key introduction.
Oh, see, um, my name is Stanley Johnson. I'm a president of Western County Fair. And uh, two weeks ago, uh, there was discussion about property taxes and the People's Initiative uh that's been going around the state. And I thought because I'm the sponsor for People's Initiative here in Western County, I just uh forward about a few things um regarding property taxes and our initiative. Because it is an important initiative and uh we are very close to getting the signature of the union to get it on the 2020 talk about it. So uh. So the way the initiative came about was in the 2023 legislative session. We the people of Wyoming expressed to our legislators, state legislators, that property taxes that have been escalating over the past three years are crushing we the people. Um, we understand that property taxes are needed. But what's been, what's happening now is that back in 1987, 1989, the legislators in this state changed the way they uh uh tax our properties from uh praise for assessed value to fair mark. Back in 1987 or nine, that was probably okay. Nobody could have foreseen what was going to take place over the last few years in the state and country. Where people from other states that are fleeing these states are ready to sell their houses for crazy amounts of money. And then they're coming into Wyoming and willing to spend crazy amounts of money for property. And as a result, we're getting these escalated property taxes over the last few years. That and the fact that residential property taxes are intertwined with commercial property taxes. Okay. So there was some bills in the 2023 legislature that we were hoping might be considered. Um, most of them were put back in the draw. There was two that were uh considered and those were uh uh one, to separate residential property tax to commercial tax. Because legislators can't pay or help uh uh residential property owners in that situation with some relief without giving it to the commercial industry, which maybe not doesn't need. Well, so that is going to be on 2024 ballot policy. That was pushed up by Mark Gordon's best. The other thing they tried to get was a lowering of uh, another thing that did come out of that was they added more money to uh for relief for those that are lower income people that they might get some uh relief for their property taxes they could apply to the government's office. Okay. Um. But other than that, other bills did not pass. And uh, as a result, we the people of Wyoming decided that we would take the situation in our own hands because when our legislators for whatever reading, reason, either political or whatever, do not listen to us, then we have avenues. This is a great six. And one of those avenues is petition. And that's what we've done. Um, we came up with the people's incentive, which is to reduce uh property taxes 50% for one person for their primary residence, and that includes building and the land. Okay, there was a bill in 23 that only included the whole, but not the land. Um, so uh, and so we did that. And uh, for the last four months, we had been about collecting signatures statewide. And like I said, we are uh very close. We have about another month to collect signatures. We expect to have those signatures and expect to have this initiative on about 2024. Um. Our assessors are not at fault for this. They're only falling the law. We recognize that, the powerless. And we also have recognized that the law has to be changed. Um, and so in this legislative session coming up, this is a letter from uh Weston County Representative, State Representative Alice Labelle. There are some more initiatives coming up. One is HB 003 Property Tax Exemptment, Exemption for Long Term Homeowners, Homeowners. Uh, it's good, he says, 50% tax exemption for long term residential owners. Bad, must be 65 years old and have paid Wyoming property tax for 30 years on any residential property. HB 004 Property Tax Refund Program. Good, it gives some relief. Bad, creates five tiers linked on for different refunds. Has to be applied for each year. And HB 0018 Property Tax Inflation Cap. Good is a cap bill that limits increase on property, residential property inflation or 5%, whichever is lower. Bad, 5% taxes doubled in 14 years. Bad, it only affects, takes effect if the constitution amended to establish a fourth property class is passed by voters around. And then uh HB 0048 Property Tax Exemption Residential Structures. Good, it caps the increase of residential structures and feed it here at 5%. Bad, it only applies to the structure and not the man. And then 127 uh Property Tax Extinction, specified real problem. Good, taxes will only increase by a rate of change, picking from a 3% or whichever is lower. Okay, so there's not a legislator, I won't say not a legislator. I'll say the majority of legislators can stay alone and believe that there's gotta be some who need the taxpayers. Some counties like Pecan County, some of these residents have experienced a 30 to 40% increase in the property tax over the last few years. And people are being elderly people are being priced for out of. Um, this is not acceptable cost. Um, and so uh, and I can give you a personal example. Uh, my neighbor sold their house last October for $525,000. And again, no fault to assessors, but I am going to give a bill that says that my home is now at $525,000. Without making any capital improvements, without making any changes to the value of my property, my property has just gone up and I'm going to be taxed accordingly. Um, that is true. Taxation without representation because there's nothing that represents the increased value of my property. The fact that somebody can sell their house for some ungodly amount of money should not affect my property. But it does. And uh, and then uh, those uh, and then the auditor here two weeks ago um explained to you that in the year 21 and 22, the, we have experienced an increase revenue of $800 million in profit. But not even. My guess is in 23 and 24, it's going to be closer to a bill. Now, yes, he did, I talked to him in the hallway. He did explain to me that a lot of these taxes, the majority are paid by our minds and our, our resources and and companies that deal in our natural resources. So probably, he said, 60 to 80%. That's still, so let's take 80%. That still means that we the people paid an extra $400 million in 21 and 22 on property taxes.
So Stanley, we're.
Okay, yeah.
We're here 10 minutes. So if you would like to let us know the, the point of letting the board know.
Okay, well, the point is, um, if you're concerned about it, then you should write your legislators, state legislators. If you're happy with your tax, property taxes, you can tell them. If you're not, then I suggest that you tell them that although there needs, the, maybe People's Initiative was too extreme, but there needs to be some sort of relief for profit taxes that people want to stay along. I always have any questions.
So can you tell me how you think uh your particular uh petition and and if you're talking about how that will affect funding for schools? I think that's what everyone is like.
So funding for schools is mandated in our state constitution. And that says before you send a dime to any other uh revenue within the state, that a school uh get their, their money, but the school will not be affected at all. Uh, so the other thing is, we would not be having this discussion, which is needed, if we didn't do this incentive. So I think there's a, so when, when, so any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
You have any other public comments from the board? Now we'll move on to.
No, you're all good. No, you're all good. Uh, unless he's iPhone.
All right, we'll move on to Ash and I and consent agenda. Move to approve. From this second stage, we're presenting consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please sign if I write saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, name. Question Carrie. All business, we have now all business depending on the board. New business certified regi- certified recognition.
Recognition. Um, thanks, Madam Chair, and I would recommend to you the resignation of Ashley Johnson as the elementary special ed teacher and commissioner of coaching. That position.
So move. From this second stage to approve the certified recognition about from Ashley Johnson as an elementary special ed teacher and to present a certain decision. All those in favor, please sign if I write saying aye. Aye, and put those name. Question Carrie.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
All those in favor, please sign if I write saying aye. Aye, and put those name. Question Carrie. Donation of wrestling record board.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would recommend to the board uh the donation of the wrestling record board, um, which is going to be sponsored, excuse me, by First North State Bank of Wyoming. Move to approve. Second.
If they moved in second stage to approve the donation of a wrestling record board from First North State of Wyoming. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please sign if I write saying aye. Aye. Oppose name. Motion Carrie, and thank you for starting the page. Pass by recommendation.
I would recommend the resignation of Amy Johnson um effective November 13th of 2024 as the elementary speech parent. And then permission to post that both as a certified and classified position um so that we can check out the applicant pool. And then show that box, also maybe.
Second. If they, if they moved in second stage to approve the pass by recommendation of the jacket of the elementary parent, which is for the reason of pass by word that you buy from person.
Madam Chair. I would ask that we look at. Yeah, he's been with us.
I wonder not. How long has she been with us? I think we should add, thank you for your service. I know she's been.
The victim said that we've been, we've had a recession and we've been recessioned. All those in favor, please sign if I write saying aye. Aye, opposed name. Question Carrie. Pass by recommendation.
I would recommend to the board, Adam Urban as a maintenance tech.
Been moved in second stage to approve the pass by recommendation for Adam Urban. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please sign if I write saying aye. Aye. Opposed name. Question Carrie. Pass by recommendation.
I would recommend to the board, King as a teaching assistant.
Move to approve. Second. They moved in second stage to approve the pass by recommendation for King as a teaching assistant. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please sign if I write saying aye. Aye. Opposed name. Question Carrie. Permission to give out prepared proposals for a type C bus for 2023.
Actually, I got a little bit alphabet and a lot of numbers here.
And a type D.
Um, I would ask the board, permission to go up with this for one type C bus for the 23, 24 school year. One type D bus for the 24, 25 school year. And two multi purpose vehicles for the 23, 24 school year.
So move. And moved in second stage to approve going out for bid for transportation vehicles that would fit. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please sign if I write saying aye. Aye. Opposed name. Question Carrie. I have to, this board. Going to start.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I sent out an email about the public officer training that's going to be at the hospital on March 8th. Anybody who's interested. Well. I have asked, you know, is it going to be approved by the Department of Office? And I was told yes. And I asked for a lawyer, anything like that, and he said, no. So. Just reminded me. And then um on the sick paid sick leave that was brought up last night. But basically our policies are, they're all the same. And um, just so you know, sick leave is paid at the rate of $20 per day for unused sick leave that when support staff or teachers or guidance public needs for districts. Um, I think that with the benefit of budget maybe coming up that that we probably, you know, we've got a discussion like that, but we need to change. That's all.
Thank you. Brad, do you know what any other, and you know what any other district's name is?
I do not right off the top of my head. I, I believe some of your bigger school districts experience some, there's a degree of variation from certified to classified from what I was told. Um, and then I do know some of the districts still have what they call like a donating bank. Um, so I don't know if that affects the rate of thing or, or even the number of days that you can build out of them. The new term is ETO. Um, and so um, I, I've heard that there might be some possibilities of people who work districts open that. I think under the school boards website though, um, most of that information should be available. Um, just because a lot of those districts will put that out. And so I, I can check that as well. Um, but as far as actual numbers right now.
And do we have a limit on how many sick days for me? Thank.
A hundred, a hundred and fifty.
I was gonna say, it just sounds low to me because the state used to be you got the tab of your salary. Right, because not. And there was a limit as well, and I think it was a hundred or twenty. People thought it was around a couple of thousand dollars. If they were filled out.
I will say that's probably true when I got to the state. And I can do some research and get some numbers and talk to the others in other districts.
And I don't know that it's. So that's it. And that answered your question right now.
Thank you. Yeah. No, I don't.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just, just some updates on some projects we're going to get done this week. Um, right now, the, the radio's uh booster is up at the elementary. And they will be coming back to finish the cell phone booster. And they will be coming back to finish the cell phone booster. Um, so that project could get wrapped up pretty soon. Um, we also will be, uh, this week, uh, Friday, we're hanging a couple huddle cameras that will go on, in the dome and out on the crow's nest in the football field. That was something the ADs upgraded our package, so we get the, the huddle cam to go with that. So that should help the coaches with some of their, their filming, so the managers don't have to do it now. Um, we are also gonna work on a few doors on Friday and install a few cameras and move a few cameras around. So that's, that's the plan on Friday. I think the biggest thing moving forward, I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. Um, the plan is for our refresh this year, um, to refresh the high school machines, high school student machines, and I'm gonna refresh, um, all of the elementary. So probably starting next month, I'll ask to go out to bid. And, um, the plan is to pay that with, with Esser, Esser, and it'll be, it'll be a big number. But the idea by doing that is then we won't have to buy computers for the next three years before we get back into the cycle. So that, that saves, um, saves us quite a bit in the long run. So, um, next month, I'll probably, um, ask to go out to bid for that. So that should be coming, and then we'll bid for the month and be bringing in a lot of new computers. So that's about it, unless there's any, any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, talked about career trade fair already, so let's get most of that. Just one thing, piggybacking on that, as we started pre-registration today for next year, again, trying to connect conversations those students had with individuals at the career and trade fair with their learning. And so hopefully all those conversations with vendors are fresh in their mind as they're going through, um, the pre-registration sheets today during ER and then finishing up tomorrow. Um, they're picking some classes that maybe they're able to reflect on, uh, the information they received at the career and trade fair. So that's going on. And then on the activity side of things, winter culminating events are starting. Um, state swimming is going to be this weekend, and, um, regional wrestling is this weekend as well. And then we'll roll right through the next few weeks. It gets kinda crazy with kids in and out of school. And so, um, it has begun. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Madam Chair. Um, did include a copy of the quarter two, um, local comment assessment results in there, so, um, I would just say as a reminder, when you're looking at, um, scores within the same column or domain, that those scores don't necessarily reflect the exact state skill. So just keep that in mind. Um, just because there are different standards underneath the domain, and sometimes they're very similar, and sometimes they're very different. So, um, so there's, there's that. And I know that there, for the most part, for most courses and grade level, we, there should be, um, about two results. Um, so two different colors or two results, uh, throughout the year so far. Some may be a little more, some may be a little less, just on timing and where that falls, uh, where assessment's falling in the curriculum. So, um, all this kind of stuff, do you have any questions on, uh, those? Which I know is a hard to read because we're cramming to a small state. But thank you for printing them off.
Anyone have any questions?
Okay. Um, other than that, I would say that, uh, the state board of education has put out a call for the, uh, is open the public comment period on many, many, many things right now. Uh, one of them being chapter ten, which are the standards, um, content standards, uh, statute essentially, and lots of language changes in there and just definition, um, clarification and cleanup uh, to go along with other project of, uh, really getting clarity, um, based on like three years ago now, the attorney general's, um, opinion that came out. And they're also taking public comment on the kind of the reduced set of standards, or I would say like the priority standards, if you will, um, that, that are in draft form for six content areas, six out of the ten content areas. So the majority of all the content areas are kind of going through these revisions of kind of, um, just finding those priority standards. And those will be the ones that we will be required, uh, to assess on our district assessment system. So, so statewide, and that's more of an equity piece there. So keep your interest in looking at those or giving a public comment on them. You can attend some working sessions as well as, uh, just fill out a survey and say what, um, concerns you have or what's left about it or why not. And I would say lastly, there's just kind of wrapping up some trainings. Uh, we've been doing some math trainings, uh, this week. We'll do them in a couple of weeks. Our last staff development day is on Friday, so we kind of have the full list from there. You know, um, Chair will probably tell you a little bit more about some of what we're doing. Um, but with that, just kind of roll with everything. So come follow me unless you have some questions. That's my bad, thank you.
Brad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, at the elementary school, I, I think you're all aware that we meet in our KLC teams once a week. And so we have our grade level teams, they're automatically built in. One challenge that we've had over the years is what to do with our specials teachers that they're single, and so how do you put them with other people teaching like subjects? Um, this last fall, Sarah Whipple applied to be part of a nationwide KLC, and she was accepted to that. So she will begin that year while she started it this month. Um, they connected arts network, and they get together after school hours and they do the things that we do in our daily KLCs, our weekly KLCs, um, with other like educators. So I just thought I'd fill you in on that. If you want to hear more about it, she loves to talk about it. So I would reach out to her. Um, and then just giving you a heads up that we started our intramural volleyball, and we have twenty-eight girls out, so that's, that's still going strong there. Otherwise, we're living day to day at the elementary. So that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Let's be, present for you. Karen.
Thank you. Uh, I'll just piggyback off of Sonia. So on Friday, first staff development, her name is Karen Hossi, is coming in. She's a special education attorney, and I've asked her to come in. She's meeting with each of the building separately and then the sped department and just really talk about the role of gen ed and special ed together. And I think we're empowering all of the teachers to see what their role in that is gonna be really important. Um, so there's a schedule, she finished building, and then she can hear. I don't know what's on the schedule, but if you want a schedule, that's fine. I'm, I'm really excited, I've seen her speak a couple times. She's very high-paced and energetic. She's. And what day is that? Friday, that's Friday. That's Friday. Two days. Yeah. Uh, other than that, our ski team was at very peak today, um, for area games. So cocoa wasn't too cold, so we should have a report next month. Some runners, some medals. And then I'm just gonna give you a quick update, um, from our WASCIA executive meeting in January. They released the date for our conference over the summer, which is usually based on sped law. Um, but mainly their WTC will be sharing about charter seven, which is special education eligibility, um, the rewrite that they've been working on for a couple of years. So it should give you some information. Uh, they did let us sped directors know that there are between fourteen and nineteen state complaints open within the state, thankfully, Weston one is not on that list. Um, but they say between fourteen and nineteen because they haven't reviewed them all, so some of them might not be relevant. Thought that was interesting, I thought that was a very good number instead of state directors. Very hopeful for the group. That's all I have, really. Any other questions?
Thank you. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. So the only thing, uh, student council's been up to recently, this past weekend, we had a Valentine's Day sweep art sort of dance where like, uh, the girls ask boys sort of thing, kind of. And that went well, we got some good, uh, numbers for donations of kids that go to the bread office and a little bit of money for student council. But, I mean, activities are kind of dying down for student council. Much big thing is probably, but. That's all I have, something's been going on, so.
Thank you. Do you have anything to share about?
Oh, I think it, it was a wonderfully, uh, put together, I think. I, I didn't have a whole lot of involvement, uh, planning or anything, so I was just a normal student going through, and everything went really well. The sessions in the beginning of the day are, were, were really informative. And, uh, talking with all the vendors and stuff in the afternoon kind of opens, opened a lot of people's eyes from what I've heard to possibilities of summer jobs, careers after high school, internships, the whole range. So, uh, big props to everyone that helps to put that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But first of all, I'd say happy Valentine's Day for everyone. Um, I'm a little concerned that you're in here tonight, but that's, that's a positive. Don't take it the wrong way. Uh, just real quick with, uh, I hope most of you are receiving, uh, my own school board's update on the, the house bills and the senate bills. So everyone should pay that, and if you get, um, some free time. So after the new stage floor replacement is in red oak, so it's been pretty, um, although it's not finished, and it's only about halfway done. Um, but to my amazement, for years, we always thought that that was sort of an open stage underneath with the ventilation stuff. That's actually a, a true concrete cube. So that stage floor sits on concrete, just like your gym floor. So if you get over there. And I did save a three foot by five foot chunk, um, in case somebody thinks they need a piece of it. Um, I, I did, I knew the minute we threw it away, then somebody would say, you know, for memorabilia, I wish I had a chunk of that. So I do have a chunk of floor, although, you know, in celebration of Valentine's Day, if you want it, you probably should grab it quick because my wife wasn't really happy with replacement of the stage floor.
Thank you, Brad. For your part. And lots of time, lots of. I will be heading to China in the morning, Thursday morning. Home to the one, the new, the power company. The chairman, Ray. Thank, thank you for stop loss coverage. So, I don't know what that is. Here with me later, some funny. Um, future agenda items. Um, Brad and I, uh, met today, and we, um, think it would be, um, beneficial for us to have about a one hour meeting, uh, sometime before our training on the twenty-fourth. And I know it's short notice, but I did want to close, um, that kind of, um, executive session, uh, to talk about personnel arguing tonight. So does anyone have an hour next week? Um, Thursday, which you rather meet, therefore your training doesn't start until eleven, which you rather meet an hour before training? I think an hour before sounds great, it's gonna be very good. I think now, I don't know. It starts at eleven at the lodge, so. Three, two. What, what, what should we do?
So are we on?
Then the training. Of course.
Good, good.
Really want, you're really, you're like, you're really, like.
I can set up Zoom too, if you want me to. Just for you, buddy. Take care of you.
I'll try, yeah.
Can't.
Yeah, we, we've hooked to their wifi before.
Don't want you left out. We'll do that, so, um, do you think we can meet out there early? As like a quarter to ten? I'll call, but I'm sure we could, because at first I had the morning. Oh, that's easy. I'll call her about nine thirty, that one, okay. Hope everybody can be there by quarter to ten, that, that, that will actually be an effective question. Yeah. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate that. Um, any other future agenda items? Staff recognition, thank you. Do we want to have one? I think it'd be great. So.
When, um, when you trigger that?
Yes, one. So is it something we want to be before twelve down? Or right after twelve down?
You know, I do want to know if there are really. Um, what we try to do is avoid, oops, we're wrong. So I, I think it, it works better for attendance-wise during the school year. Um, once we get into summer mode, then it sort of, um, goes their own way. And it usually may is pretty full between, you know, all the different of them. And then after that, we try to look at, you know, you try to avoid every soccer, volleyball kind of a matchup, and then understanding that the weather is also a good part. Um, and if you wanted to go to the beach, then it would be, you know, contingent on if they have them in the beginning as well. Because I have not discussed anybody.
So what are we thinking about as we, I, I guess, on Friday night better? And Saturday?
I want to wait.
Yeah, so I was looking at May third and fourth, because it's not Valentine's Day, it's not graduation season, it's not. Third is a Friday, and the fourth is a Saturday.
And the people usually.
I think it depends on what's going on, yeah. It's hard to tell. But it's easy. So the people who will be working on organizing it, if they're on Friday or Saturday. Even. Even. On the hand, I mean.
Well, it's Friday, and then I'll start it, we should have a number six. You know, I post Friday. Yeah, you know. So. Sure, so.
And Kim, what, what do you think? And Kim, what what do you think?
It is April twenty seventh.
Okay, so that's the week the Saturday before. That's what I figured. That's the week before that was competition. We'll start with that meeting. And our board training, we are going to do that on the on the twenty fourth at eleven. We're very thick discussing beforehand. And then public office, the training. We've got this opportunity to do it with the hospital on the team at four noon for what we pay for an hour. At no cost, W S is still waiting for Department of Audit to go forward there. We have to do that by July first. Anybody on the board?
Does anybody know what? What would happen if somebody chooses not to attend? Does anyone know the answer to that?
Madam Chair. Uh, I can tell you what they called us at the first go around, that the Department of Audit. Thinks that they could leave the move. Nobody can give me the mechanism of how that would be done, but supposedly. What we were told was the Department of Audit. To take an action to see the person who moved the water age ward or position or not. Which gets us into a whole different constitutional order thing that nobody really has a better answer to. So the answer is nobody really. But they they kind of dangled that out there, but. There there's going to be a possible, the Department of Audit to take action.
And it's minus when there has not been an Attorney General's opinion. On. Who, you know, if if it's the Department of Audit, it's a matter of days. First, the state to do something there. The statute isn't really clear, so. Who knows? By the end of the list, that is especially not used. But uh, right now, do you think we do, so?
Madam Chair, if I may, uh. That is correct. The they can request the removal, but the statute's unclear over whether or not. Um, that removal can be enforced. Uh, I will. Let everybody know that there is a proposed change that's before the legislature right now. Um, which would affect. Uh. One, changing it to a minimum. For training requirement not to exceed four hours, because I know some of that training has been exorbitantly long. As well as um potentially modifying the provision that if a member doesn't complete it. They won't have an inability to serve on financial committees. For the organization, so they are evaluating that statute. Um, what exactly removal and the changes look like will depend on what comes out of this session.
Thank you for that first question. You know, you can't give it. So the other option is the Department of Audit has a self-paced video presentation that you can filter. Um. Uh, if you have a series of videos, then and there is a test at the end of there, so. That's all I have. Uh, do you have anything else to come up with? Not with any images. I'm sorry, what? Yeah, pretty soon, do we not? I'm sorry, didn't have you on there, but please. Yeah.
I noticed that, you're good. Well, I I thought Casey was gonna bring it up during his report when you were like, do you have anything to? Present to us? And I was like, oh, that's a lead in, but apparently it was not.
So we do have a personal program. Thank you.
Yeah. Is that good? Okay, cool.
There was the swing vote, right? She's very powerful. What's your? You know, that you could talk about the chairmanship and everything else. It still comes down to you need three votes to win stuff. Do you think Vera enjoys that, or do you think it's just she accepts that's the job and? And she's taking it on herself to go ahead and be that person?
I think she, from what I gather from watching the meetings, I haven't been to meeting in person in a long time. But from watching them and listening to it, I think she accepts that role. Obviously, I can't speak for her, but I. I don't know how much I would enjoy being that person. I think it's a hard job, um, and I think you're in a hard place, especially when you have to. Sit between those two groups of men every meeting. And be that person in the middle, which I I. Think she might be in the middle of the way. I think she might sit between them too.
Yeah, a lot of fur flies around Vera and.
Is it, we're good? Okay. So is this thing, I want to say is this thing on, is it good? Okay. So basically, Casey and I are with FBLA, and it has been requested by us that on behalf of FBLA, we kind of just bring like a summary to you guys of. Both the career and trades fair and kind of what opportunities like the school offers as far as like career and technical education opportunities, which is mostly English classes. So we just wanted you to inform you guys about opportunities that they have and then like if they participated in certain groups like FBLA like we're in, FCC LA. And FFA, what different like life benefits that could have for them, and then again, the career and trades fair, like outcomes and such.
So, uh, the high school offers a lot of different CTE classes. And uh, most of those are through uh the single. There's a couple listed up there, but CTE stands for career and technical education. So these classes offer these students to kind of prepare them for the life outside of high school. And uh, some of them to introduce uh different career opportunities. So you have classes like like web page design, you know, again, so like that maybe even that gives you so. It's a good offering. And uh. Using Skills USA as well, it's just another organization that these classes use to kind of guide the curriculum. Uh, so to speak. Those are uh opportunities that you.
And you have competitions as well, right?
In F, yeah, so Skills USA is on like a national level, like so. It's used in classes across the US, just as far as like a teaching standard, like how to like. Inform students in like different like of like those classes and just like making sure they're meeting the certain requirements to graduate with that said credit. So as far as Skills USA goes, it does also offer benefits for FBLA, just as far as like. Training and taking tests and such like stuff such as that, like information stuff, so we do compete with Skills USA information. And then as far as organizations go, we're in FBLA, which our advisor is Mrs. Engle, FBLA Future Business Leaders of America. And that's just some of like um the benefits that come out of it and some of like what we participate in. So it can range all the way from like role player incentive to like. Like what you would do in like a customer service stance, um, all the way to group presentations, solo presentations. You could take tests like at your school to qualify for state. So and then for FCC LA, that's uh Leanna Scribner. And that's Family, Career and Community Leaders of America, and it's actually FCC LA week. Like this week, so they were sending out little trivia questions to the school to learn more about FCC LA, so that was kind of nice to see. And it's more of like on like the baking textiles, like home, like. Knowledge type basis, and then FFA is one of the newer teachers, uh Morgan. Low. Low, Lep. I'm I always struggle with her last name and I always feel so bad, so that's Future Farmers of America. So it's a lot of like career and leadership development and like job applicability skills if they're wanting to go into something with said agriculture.
Yeah, so diving into this uh career and trades fair a little bit, we've all heard about it. But uh, we we recognize the organizers of it. And uh, just the general purpose of it, you know, is it's the communication aspect. Because the idea behind the the fair. Was that a lot of high school students within high school. Think that the only routes that are presented to them are either University of Wyoming or the coal mines. But there's lots of. Opportunity out there, even in our small town, I mean, you have. You see just the next slide, how many businesses actually showed up. But. I mean, sixty plus, I think their the total number is way higher than than that. So it's just, it's just teaching the students and informing them on on what's what's actually happening in in Newcastle. So here's. Here's a list, I'm not gonna read them all out to you, but there's there's a lot of them up there and there's probably there was probably some that weren't even included on this list. So the the students really had a really wide view. Of the different routes, and there's even a lot that's not even up there, but maybe some of these. Conversations that were sparked with these representatives. Can lead students into ultimate career paths, and that's that's kind of the whole idea of this thing is that there's more than just college or the coal mine.
So this is just like the different seminars that were set up, so how this day was split up was that. In the morning, the seniors and the juniors would attend the seminars, which were in the classrooms, and then the freshmen and sophomores would start. In the dome at the actual career trades fair, then they would switch after lunchtime, or ac- actually it was like two sessions before lunchtime, I think. So for the eleventh and twelfth, it looks like they have more, which they do, but it's a lot more applicability as they get older, so. The sophomores and freshmen, they would get this if we continued the trades fair throughout high school, they would get the same classes. So it's just like a lot of like. Like job applications and like stuff you're gonna need to go through, like when you get older, like taxes, all that fun stuff. And then with the freshmen and the sophomores, it was a lot of just planning ahead for high school, like prepping for different tests they're gonna take. And then I know a lot of the freshmen and sophomores now, talking to them, had a much better idea of what classes they want to take. Throughout their high school career to benefit a possible career choice path, and I know. The se- some of the seniors and the juniors are kind of bummed that we didn't have something like this sooner. Because now they're scrambling, I'm one of them, trying to take certain. Classes so it could possibly benefit like a future career or like something I'm going for in the future, so. Yeah, fair outcome, so it led to a lot more career consideration from kids, just like again, looking back at all those businesses, like really knowing like what's out there in our community, like. Like it was stated earlier, whether it be a summertime job, something that you could pursue after you're eighteen, or you graduate high school, or. A career you could pursue after college. Um, and then again, like the school and the class appreciation, it's free right now. Like if it's free in high school, you might as well take it now instead of going to college and paying to struggle and. So there's a lot of appreciation for what programs we have here as far as groups and classes go and opportunities. And it also really highlighted uh like clubs and classes knowledge, like those FBLA, FCC LA groups and what kid they could do. Within those clubs to like look good on an application, like a job resume, like stuff such as that. And I know like a lot more kids now have a much bigger appreciation for school, like there was like a lot of kids going into it, like that week prep before where we were filling out papers, like. Do you see yourself as a person with strong communications? And they were really bored through that, but once the career fa- fair actually. Came and they experienced it, they were really real had a really good time with that. And then next up here, we just got, these were some of like the posters that were up, just to like, kind of like. I'm at a loss for words, kind of just like show off the career fair, advertise, boom, there you go. I should have looked at something with educate or education, geez, communication, yeah, so, yeah.
Pictures for kind of show you, there are lots of booths, rows, students go up and down. Uh, you collect stamps every time that you talk to a member, you can keep track of which stages you've been to. And because there were a lot of them. And just uh how many you've been to, and it was like. It it was very difficult to talk to all of them. I think I only maybe got through about half. But the the conversations and stuff you have with those members were very beautiful. And kind of added a lot to uh the the just. Knowledge of what you needed afterwards, and it was pretty busy, with lots and lots of people walking all around, all sorts of different. Things to talk to, agriculture, you have military branches there, recruiters. But I mean, it's just all tying together, uh, it was really, it was really good opportunity for a lot of us. I think that uh it expands more, because you can join these clubs, that's what we were talking about, is that the F C C LA and FFA. Are the main ones that we offer, so. Kind of get an idea of opportunities and competing these state or national level competitions to. Figure out, you know, kind of what's what's going on after high school, what's that's the biggest question. And the biggest worry for a lot of us is what's what's next, and this kind of lays that path of. A little bit of ease on your mind, you know, like lots of people went through the same struggles as high schoolers. And found their successful career path. But that's the idea of it. Um, appreciate you guys all listening to us at the end of end of this meeting, but.
Yeah, not sure what to bring it up. Thank you, guys, so, and if questions or anything.
From our nominees, but.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Is your girlfriend? Who did it?
Um, Amisha Cummins' grandmother.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, it's like prior, he was like, oh, you better find someone to do porn wrestling or like, so wrestling. Or else they're gonna like do it, do a fool's haircut, I was like, no, no, keep doing that, so.
Turned out good.
Yeah.
And if you go in there, even at like six o'clock in the morning. No, I'm over it. No. Like at night. I'm six o'clock at night, I mean, even that. Six, by six thirty, it's kind of a ghost happening. Like legit.
Orleans is pretty busy too. Six o'clock is kind of that cutoff where kids are kind of gone, and it's almost like another set. Comes in.
That happens at like five thirty, they're like the lifters.
Yeah.
Free weight. Sam, you know, those guys. No, for real, it's like the people that, that's what they do. Yeah. Yeah, so they come in later. But they, by six thirty, they're.
Oh, yeah, nobody.
Like I come in there at nine six or whatever, just like, okay, try to get one in, and there's like. You can have any machine you want, because there's no one.
Okay, we'll call the record meeting to order. Um. You got a agenda agenda in front of you? Get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move me to approve, second.
Been moved and seconded, is there? Any discussion on the agenda? Seen none, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Uh, okay.
All opposed, by name? Attendors approved, um, recognitions? Seen none, visitors' comments? Seen none, we'll move on to action items, get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Been moved and seconded? Um, is there any discussion? None? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same time? See no old business or new business? Anything, or anybody's information?
Madam Chair. And we had our new task record meeting, and this is packed, they came to discuss. Pickleball, apparently that is the new big thing. And so they came to us asking what we could do and.
And so they came to us asking what we could do and we told them that the school would be about the only place that would be available to play new football. They're already doing it enough, so they're probably gonna make her out of direct board or the school just gonna fly out. So they don't, I mean, they understand the portion of me and how jammed it, but they're hoping it could be for me do something later, they don't have to add up the numbers. It's not a letting.
Just um in fact, I believe the request has already come to Kim and I believe that the opinion that is something that would be more let's say like a Wednesday night where students are supposed to, you know, be out of the gym at a certain time. Because truly one of the things that Teresa and Kim both run into is with the amount of other student activities that we run, um it's just a fight for gym space and then the ability for the custodians to still have time, you know, trying to give you. I believe that is a conversation for Wednesday evening on that windy and competition of co-ed volleyball.
So. So what you're saying is they're going to try to organize it through even.
That was my understanding is that's where the request was gonna go.
Any other, are your information? Or discussion items? This meeting.